Welcome to the special meeting for the Glendale Arts and Culture Commission for October 24, 2018. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Druvanessian?
Here.
Oshigan?
Sadorian?
Here.
Vice Chair Vidor. Chair Person Sahakian.
Here.
For the record, Commissioners Oshigan and Vice Chair Vidor are not present. The agenda for the October 24 meeting was posted on the bulletin board outside City Hall on October 22, 2018.
Next item, please.
Item two, Business Agenda at 2A1, Discuss and Provide Direction on the Arts and Culture Commission Work Plan.
Great, so we are following up our previous meeting where we reviewed the work plan draft for the 2019-2020 year, and we have a number of initiatives, staffing actions, policy analysis, and marketing and outreach efforts that were identified, and we called the special meeting specifically to go over the timeline and also the budget, so what we plan to spend from the Urban Art Fund specifically for the 2019-2020 year. So with that, we have with us the report outlining when certain actions will take place, when they'll begin, when they'll complete, and then also we have the estimated budget in terms of what type of funds will be needed to accomplish these goals. So with that, you know, we can open it up to conversation and to see if there are any recommended changes or direction for staff so that we can bring this back to our next regularly scheduled meeting in November and take action to make a recommendation to council. Any questions?
My question, the amounts that we have here was recommended by the staff since I was not here last meeting, or is it what we have already discussed?
You know, based on, I think, the previous presentation, and staff can correct us, so the, some of these items are items where we know the cost, where, you know, for example, Beyond the Box Utility Box mural has a very specific cost per artist, we know generally how many boxes we do, and then some of them, such as the temporary arts program, and some of those where we need to first hire a consultant, and the consultant has to go out, reach out for, call for artists, then see what projects are, you know, potentially going to come to Glendale. With those, they were driven by the Urban Art Program Plan in terms of direction and estimates.
Thank you.
So I'm a little confused looking at this, at the recommended budget for 2019, where it says, let's say, for the permanent art piece, it says $10,000 for consultant. I'm just wondering what that $10,000 exactly is, like, and is that for a specific time span? I'm a little confused as to that, if I could get some clarity.
Website?
No, so it says $10,000 for a consultant, and I'm just wondering what exactly does that mean?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We, when we went over the budget process, our thinking was that we would hire a consultant to really develop outreach, and outreach to, not only to the community but also to artists, to supplant and support the idea for the being, the long-term, big arts project. So it's really about doing the outreach, doing the research about what works, what doesn't, materials, and really developing the integration and implementation of a, of a permanent landmark arts project. So that would be, I think in the timeline, when you asked specifically about what kind of time that would involve?
Yeah.
In the timeline here, we have outreach for 2019, and that would be, you know, a very, something we'd probably do an RFP for that position, for a consultant position, and then that would get implemented, we'd interview, and that would get implemented later, the second half of 2019.
Okay. I was just under the impression that the consultant would be working on the majority of the items. I didn't realize that it would be a specific fee just to be working on that one project.
Well, I think that there would be multiple things depending on the nature of the RFP, so that would be one element, and I think it was just slotted in here as a budget item. But if you look at the timeline, you'll see that there's a variety of projects that are in there that we would, it would really be up to the commission, how the RFP was written, but that's a budget we've set aside just for that project. I would imagine it'd be significantly more for other projects if they were going to be involved in other projects on the list.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maria, for the record, could you state your name and your position?
Yes, my name is Maria Sundin, I'm the Principal Administrator for Library Arts and Culture.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Could I ask a question?
Commissioner Druvanessian.
Mr. Sadorian, are you?
This is suffice, yeah, I'm gonna have to just kind of look over, I'm trying to figure, just because there's so many different items and budgets, I'm just a little confused as to, so you're saying that's specifically for outreach? Because they're already going to be paid a certain amount of, I guess, yearly, for however long that they're going to be there, correct? The consultant?
Yeah, typically a consultant for that position would involve outreach to the community, sitting down with leaders, members of council, artists, so outreach involves not only having meetings, but also having coffee, sitting down and meeting with people and discussing all the issues that are at hand and trying to come up with a identifiable solution. So that's the nature of outreach that, that would involve.
So is this on top of what they're already going to be, being paid?
Well, we're estimating here how much it would cost to do for the first year to research that large project.
Okay.
If I could just add a clarifying question, this $10,000 for the consultant is an estimate for a dedicated consultant for this project, it is not the consultant that's overseeing the Urban Art Program Plan implementation.
Yeah, that's what I'm exactly wondering.
Yeah, and that would be, it's not. That would just be for that one project.
Okay, okay.
That piece, and there are, when the budgets for the other pieces as part of the projects, part of those budgets are, will go to the consultant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, that clarified.
Commissioner Druvanessian?
Well, the way I envision consultants' work is that initially they need to create a roster of the major artists, like the way Barbara did for us, showing what are the major, something that we put as representing the city of Glendale, she did with different communities and in different states and cities. So it would be great if we would have, this person would create a roster of all the people that, they are magnificent, and more or less the price ranges, I know this might be a pie in the sky, but basically, we need to, commission needs to have that. So at the beck and call, at the time, whatever needs be, we would be able to get in touch with. So if the consultant could provide us and come to the commission and create a roster of people who have created things, and also what they have created, so first of all, the commission would more or less would have an idea of what we want to have, and then we will ask the community as well of the choices that the commission has, that they would prefer to see what in their city as represents them in the city. So it is a tough job, if it's done properly, and it's not just having coffees with the community people, but knowing at large what happens in United States and/or else, and to give us a report on what are the possibilities that, with the money that the commission would have, with the art fund, that we could allocate, or we could get the services of the person that might be the best. That's a hefty job, that's how I see it. Correct me if that's not what it's going to be.
Hi, guys. Nikki Winslow, Assistant Director for Library Arts and Culture, Chair Sahakian and Commissioners. So, and again, these numbers, that's why we're here today, like, we're not trying to tell, we're just making suggestions, and a lot of the numbers that I pulled were either based on, as Chair Sahakian mentioned, what was allocated the last time around, or based on Barbara's suggestions through the Urban Art Program Plan. As far as the, the permanent art, for the first year, do we want the consultant to spend some time, in which case that would be the money that would be allocated towards the research that's being done, maybe that includes putting together a list, putting an RFP together, we're not exactly sure what that means, but what money would you like to allocate towards working on this project specifically? The second year, or the recommended, would be, what do you want to spend on it? So again, those numbers, I wasn't sure. And the way that I structured this document was to have a more overarching umbrella for the project, and then the second column being example types, because I don't know that we wanted, originally we had Beyond the Box and this and that, rather than just allocate, or having that as a temporary art program. So that way, if other things come up in the next two years, they could fall under one of these umbrellas. So, for example, with the public utility infrastructure enhancements, maybe that is expansion of Beyond the Box, as well as pipes, or garbage trucks, or the other things that came up as we were discussing putting this together. Again, I pulled based on the numbers from the last time around, but this is where we'll, we want to encourage the Commissioners to really look at how much you want to allocate towards those programs. Again, everything that is taken forward as a project would be approved by you, including that budget, so to me, this is like a general guideline of what you'd like to allocate money into in the next two years. As far as the list of people, a couple comments on that. I did include under Staffing Actions, hire a conservator and art appraiser, that's where we would be trying to focus on inventory and inspection of public art throughout the city. We want to create a maintenance plan, and then in addition to that, under Marketing and Outreach, we want to put together, and I don't know that we discussed this, because we brought it up at the last Commission meeting with, with you, Commissioner. Develop an application process, so not only identifying people in the community, but also giving them an opportunity to bring things forward to the commission in a more formal way. Because right now, I haven't been able to identify how an artist in the community, or a city department, or anyone that really wants to bring something before the commission as an idea, has a vehicle in place to do that. So I really think the development of the website, including a proposal area or an application process, which then is something that would be reviewed monthly by the commission, is another thing that we need to focus on, and could help guide building that list of available artists, or projects, or things like that. So that's kind of how I incorporated it into the budget and timeline.
I can see that through all the different parts, and it's a job well done. It just, mine was, what do we expect from that consultant for the first part that we discussed? That is not only the art, because if we talk about permanent art and we want to make Glendale a destination thing, and all that stuff, we need to know what happens in the world, people who are sitting on the dice, and also people who are going to be later on in different committees to make a choice of what kind of things are happening, and who are the people who have done that. Maybe we cannot afford them, can we do, but nonetheless, to have an education or educated idea of what, what is the best, is something that, it takes time and effort, but we need to know that. So I know it's something that constantly changes, and there are so many changes that happens in different cities, and different monuments, and different artworks are being displayed, but it is good to have that. And in the future, if that consultant is not with us, then we can still use the information to be in our archives, as these are the people that, in case within the money we can afford to spend on those projects, these are the people that we can get in touch with. That is, the workload of the person was of, more of interest than the exact numbers, so, and especially for the permanent art. The other ones is, within the city, I can understand, we can change, all that stuff, but to have something that represents city of Glendale, and our city and community, is something that is major, and we would like to be exposed to much more, the way Barbara did for us. But I know that Barbara was quite expensive, I don't know how much we can afford on that, but it was great that she brought to us what happens elsewhere, and who were the people who created it. So it is always good to have that kind of an information in our archives. That's what I would like to see, if possible, within what we have for the first item.
Commissioner Gary Schaefer, Director, Library Arts and Culture. I would concur with you, I think Nikki did as well at the very top, that that would be helpful information, and information that we would need from the consultant, so I agree with you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I think that would come as part of the RFP process. We're going to have to identify what we want the consultants or consultants to be doing, and that's why it is pluralized, we may hire one specifically to work on permanent art, let's say, and that RFP will look different than, we want to hire someone that, until we can hire a full-time administrator to oversee all the work that's being done by the commission and through the Urban Art Fund, that, you know, their job is going to be to carry forward your work plan, and maybe part of that RFP will be stipulating that we want them to create a list of those types of resources.
This is specifically done because prior to this, we had a situation, and we had only two people came here, and out of two, we had to choose the best we could, and it was not to the satisfaction of the commission nor the community. So that's why if we have a broader thing, information of who are there, and within our budget, we would be able to contact them if need be, and see if they are interested, and then introduce our RFP and et cetera. But it is to shop around for what we want, it is good always to have a roster of names and people, and what they can do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to apologize for being late, I had a prior commitment that I couldn't quite navigate, and, you know, I didn't hear the initial comments, so I may be coming in repetitive or not, but I actually wasn't sure I knew what I was looking at. Is this table supposed to be the working draft of the thing that's going to be presented publicly at a city council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So, because I was looking at it from the standpoint, and this as well, this would be the cover thing describing the overview. Okay. I wasn't sure, on the third bullet point, you know, I wish, I wish we would use numbers, like an outline form, maybe, you know, 1A, 1, because the bullet points all kind of run together, but there was one point where you referred to guidelines, I think that had to do with interdepartmental review, it's the policy section, where was I looking? Policy analysis, and you talk about reviewing guidelines to develop recommendations, and are there guidelines? Are there existing guidelines, or was this referring to developing some kind of a guideline? Because I wasn't sure what you were talking about. This is policy analysis, the third bullet point.
In the writing?
Yeah, in the overview, in the Urban Art Program two-page overview. Third bullet point down in the policy analysis section, top of page two.
That is, we were going to talk about working with the other city departments to make sure that when they're taking on projects in the city, that public art is something that the Arts and Culture Commission is part of, and that's incorporated into their project.
Yeah, I understand that, I just wondered what guidelines you were referring to here. What, when you say review guidelines, which, I don't remember seeing guidelines, so I'm just asking you what guidelines you're talking about.
Right, I remember this discussion, and maybe it's miswritten, but I think we talked about reviewing existing policies, and seeing how we can be incorporated in those policies as a commission, so that...
Okay, well, maybe change it to that, because I think we need to be really clear, and there shouldn't be any mistaking where there are existing documents and there aren't. So I would suggest changing that to be, because I see two things here, and this thing about the interdepartmental is relevant, but, you know, to, to look at existing policies and then develop a cohesive one that, that applies to everybody would be appropriate, but there are also two components to it. One is the things that aren't defined in the work plan, where, you know, parks or whoever, as we already discussed, the Arts Act, Arts and Entertainment District is, they've got this whole working group, and we should be an active part of that, so that anything we're going to end up having to do, ends up reflected in the work plan, so there's that. But then there's also Arts and Culture Commission things that are not, that are, that are actually are not going to be part of the work plan, and that just relate to other departments doing other things. I think it's, it's not just, it's hard to explain what I'm talking about, but it isn't just interdepartmental projects, it's also, there's a kind of an overview of really saying in so many words that everything that has an art component comes through here, so it's got to have that broad statement, and that...
So something like community-wide initiatives?
Yeah, something like community, any community-wide initiatives will come through the Arts and Culture Commission, and there'll be a co-ordinated process. And then, of course, the "not in the work plan, we need to be at the table" part. Okay, let me see, I had a few things, and I just...
For a point of clarification, do you mean a community-wide project, or anything happening in the community?
Well, I, I think what I mean is any, anything in the community that involves city input, no matter what department it is. So it's, that we really spread a big net around this in our verb, in our wording, so that everything gets captured, and we have a voice in it, whether it's related to the work plan or not. Okay, then, let's see, the table, so this, so this table, you know, sometimes I know you're using draft language, so I feel a little bit weird, you know, saying, "Don't use this word or that word." So I'm assuming that this is the way you want it read, so I take out the bean, you know, everything should be, everything should be self-explanatory here, and actually, I didn't quite get that, what you said before about that the project program is what we're going to do in the work plan, and the examples, and the examples didn't, this is the iconic, is this supposed to be the iconic piece of art that somehow defines an area of the city or the city? You know, saying arts and entertain, describing the geography led me in a completely different direction, so I think maybe, say, the iconic impactful piece of permanent public art that is going to land someplace important, you know, put it in a way that the public is going to understand what that is. And then, on the next one, yeah, Beyond the Box, you know, I, Beyond the Box is kind of jargony too, in the new, in the new age of us having an urban art plan, so maybe, say, utility boxes existing, and then other public utilities such as, so that the public, you know, we hope that people who aren't insiders at all can read this and say, "Oh, that's a good idea," and there may be a little bit too much, like insider. The next question was on AHA Adams Square temporary art, I thought, is AHA art happens anywhere? So that term is going to keep existing, right?
I was just trying to provide examples so that the commission would understand what I meant by these umbrellas. So, you know, being that we're going to make this a public document, we can alter that to be...
Yeah, I, I think you've got to write this thinking that you're speaking to the, you know, innocently ignorant public who wants to be informed, and the people who know what's going on. So, you know, but I also thought that Adams Square was now part of, you know, that H, whatever it's called, AHA, or Art Happens Everywhere, maybe, is going to include now, we're incorporating that into that program, so it becomes a permanent fixture of that program, or is it still something separate?
Again, I think it falls under this umbrella, because what hap, you know, the exhibits that happen there are changing, so I think what I was trying to say is, how much money are we going to allocate to these temporary art programs citywide? With a goal, based on what commission guided us, was one to two new neighborhoods a year. So, I mean, that would continue to fund existing ones like that, but then also expand...
Oh, so by keeping it separate, you're saying we're going to keep Adams Square going on a regular basis?
Well, that's up to the commission.
Oh, okay.
But it would fall under this funding umbrella.
Okay.
Right?
Okay. And the consultant, yeah, I was a little confused, I heard the tail end of the discussion about the consultant up at the top of the, of the table, the $10,000 consultant specifically earmarked, and I can't remember that that was in the plan. I mean, I know we talked about an interim consultant to bridge the gap between having no staff and having a staffer, but this is a different consultant, correct?
Well, it's money that would be earmarked for them to work specifically on that.
Okay.
Because if you look under Staffing Actions, hiring project-based consultants the first year, I just put staff time, because we're going to have to put together the RFPs, identify what we're looking for, so that's not really allocating funds, but if we want to, I didn't know if we needed some kind of a budget set aside to specifically work on the permanent art.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, somehow we have to, in the, in the plan, drive home in a, in a nice diplomatic way, but in, that this is really important, and that any consultant we hire is a, you know, relatively expensive solution for putting a Band-Aid on the fact that there's no, that the required essential staff person that the consultant told us we needed is not part of this. So if, the thing in the overview where it says to oversee the work until administrator is hired, and the thing on the top kind of created, like, I was a little confused about the wording there, and what was meant, and maybe we could call the consultant under Staffing Actions, if I understand this correctly, the interim, not project-based consultant, but, you know, or well, project-based, but interim consultant, or, you know, an acting staff person, which we would hire as a consultant, because we all know that this is not, we're just going to spin our wheels if we don't get the person, and it's probably going to be very difficult to implement, so I think we need to get some language in there that really drives this home, but, you know, that's...
My, my only concern about that is, I believe, based on the Urban Art Fund, staff can be funded if it's project-based?
Legal's still looking into that. Oh, okay.
Because, I mean, I'm afraid that if we put them as like an interim staff person, that maybe it won't be money that, it can't be funded out of Urban Art.
No, no, I guess that's a very poor choice of words, but the idea was to fill...
Right, so that's why I think we were being more focused on project-based, and maybe their project is the work plan, let's say.
All right, yeah, maybe, and then the bean thing, bean unquote, unquote, becomes part of that.
Yeah, well, I'll definitely go back and make this easier to read for a person that doesn't know our lingo in terms of past projects.
Yeah. Another thing I noticed, and I can't remember if it was in the overview or the table, is at one point you used it as an, oh, here it is, it's in the table, it's the fourth one down on project program, it says Open Arts and Music Festival. That is the na, the title of Glendale Arts Festival, is it not? And we're not...
Not that one.
We, we had talked, and I think we talked about, you, you weren't at the last meeting our last, but I know, we've talked before about this idea of, of having what we would call our own unique arts walk-around, where we familiarize the public with the main venues in the Arts and Entertainment District, and we talked about that at the last special meeting, but I think we didn't make any decisions about doing anything with Glendale Arts, so we should, you know, use another example here, like a, you know, an Arts and Entertainment District walk-around of the sites that already exist.
It was an Arts Week.
Arts Week, yeah, either an...
It was based off Tech Week, is what we were thinking.
Yeah, but it was, and I think you and Ara were the two major discussants there, and it was to, you know, we've got at the Alex, obviously, and Mona, and at the Central Libraries Reflect Space, and a couple of key galleries, and just limited to that, but Open Arts and Music Festival shouldn't be on.
I, I would like to include a large-scale city event. I personally, based on, and again, this is my opinion, the huge turnout last year with Open Arts and Music, I think it's something that the commission should explore partnering with them. They got over 15,000 people in attendance, and I think with exposure like that, I, I think it'd be a really good thing for Arts and Culture to collaborate with, and that's something staffed. really good thing for Arts and Culture to collaborate with, and that's something staff could talk to Glendale Arts about, but I'll change the wording to say-
Okay.
Large-scale city event, arts walk.
E.G., yeah, right, okay. Yeah, I mean, we, we brought it up as a good idea, but I, we didn't realize you'd already bro, bridged the subject with them.
No, I haven't.
Oh, you haven't, okay.
But I, I do think that is-
She was using it as an example.
Yeah, as an example, so-
Okay, yeah, I think we-
I'll, I'll remove specific-
We should just use it as an example when we've told, talked to them rather than before. Okay, let me see if I have anything else. Yeah, why are we culture? I don't remember discussion about cultural heritage celebrations, not that it isn't a great idea, but what do we mean and what are we, you know, could we, you know, it's supposed to be a work plan, so what was the vision here?
This, do you want to talk about this here? Cultural programming offered by Library Arts and Culture or other partners?
So in my, Commissioner, my brief time here, I have picked up from council that they would like to see more culture. And in fact, the library as the department over arts and culture does an incredible amount of cultural programming. And so the idea would be, can we include that as, as part of cultural-
Fund it and identify it and fund it.
Right.
So it wasn't a specific, unique event, anybody had to kind of just, you know, corral what we have and fine-tune it and upgrade it and identify it as cultural.
Yes.
So on, you know, on the same subject of being transparent to the community, we just make sure that we explain that in a way that the public will understand. Because we're going to be advocating for, you know, to our community members and we want to be able to have them read this thing and understand it as much as they can so that we don't have to.
You know, Commissioner Vidor, I think it's excellent idea because that was something that came to me, that this is just for our discussion, but not for presentation, the part, the examples. I mean, that should go to the council nor to the community because it is, it just gives us a little hints about things, but it needs to be well described. Actually, it needs to be, more should be given to this part, so later on, the amounts and et cetera would make more sense. And absolutely about the Glendale Arts, yes, we, it is one of the major things we have in the city as part of the art walk. We, I was here, actually, when we talked about the art walk and that is something that is very important. And again, the consultant part, there, to me, correct me, you know, staff and also, you know, whoever can, that we need to have somebody temporarily doing the art and culture commission's administrator. And yet, we have other plans that is specific and it is people who are educated in the direction, who have experience in. Our work plan is so magnificent because it was provided by a person who has a wealth of information and the way it is put, the document, you can take it anywhere in the world as a great work plan for the Arts and Culture Commission and City of Glendale. So the first part, when we want to do something permanent, I do believe it is a specific job of a very trained person who is well-traveled, well-knowledgeable about everything that goes on in the world. And the other person that we have as a contemporary consultant is a person just to take the job temporarily till we have somebody hired for the commission. So I see these two as two separate items, but definitely the example part needs to be worked and well-expressed so community would have an idea of what is being suggested. As Commissioner Vidor said, this part is only clear to us. It helped me when you talked about Bean, I knew what we are talking about, how major or how as a gate kind of permanent thing to the City of Glendale, it was fine for us, but community would not understand. So great idea, but all the details, Commissioner Vidor, that you added, it is, it would be a necessity to fix that part.
Okay, can I finish?
Yes.
Okay, just one more thing. On the, this table, which is the timeline table, great, the thing at the, you know, and this is going to go with it, right? This is part of, is this just for us or is this going to be part of the fact that we'll go in the work, looking at the, the color-coded timeline?
That's based on your direction to us, if you want it included or not. Originally, when I reformatted the budget document, I included a timeline, those columns on the right, which we, again, based on your direction, we can keep or not keep. But the last work plan did have, I don't know if you remember, you had to like fold it out to see the whole timeline. So we weren't sure if the commission wanted this visual guide in terms of implementation, so that's up to the commission. But we kind of replicated what was done in the past.
Well, okay, and before, I'm, I'm sure there'll be a discussion about that, but my, my concern or suggestion, rather, was that you've got things listed here and that we've got this, which is kind of our defining high-level overview of the whole plan, which is divided into, I think, three things, the, the actual things itself, the staffing actions and the policy actions. And somehow or other, your, your outline here, especially if we're going to include it, should parallel in some way. So I'd like to see the same, you know, you've got public art and cultural initiatives, so maybe call the header on this thing, public art and cultural initiatives. And then, you know, can you relate this timeline in, in the color coding to what you've written here so that when I read this, I'll be able to go from this four-page thing to this and be able to relate timings of things to what you've explained and how you've worded it on the actual document itself. And that got me a little confused because, you know, you have neighborhood, we have citywide arts and examples, neighborhood arts. And, you know, possibly if you, if you did number and letter these in an outline, then you could say, you know, if it's 1A, you could put 1A in parentheses. But, you know, I saw temporary arts and I said, "Well, I thought we were calling it neighborhood arts." And I was just getting a little confused between the wording in the cover explanation of your work plan and this document. So I, you know, I hope we can use the same wording so that it wouldn't just provoke questions, like what are we talking about here?
Okay, we'll try to fix that.
Yeah, and I, I mean, you know, if, I know you're all busy and staff-constrained and it's tough, but that's what we're here for. And if you need help on something, you know, maybe you'd rather not have our help, but I'm certainly happy since I suggested it to help with it.
Well, the input's very valuable and, but that said, I do want to applaud Nikki for putting this all together because she's taking all of our, not just the commission's, but anyone's, you know, very comments from here and there-
Right, I know.
And putting it all into an organized fashion.
I, I recognize that and I think it's phenomenal what's being done. And that's why I'm hoping, since we know that now we're even more staff-constrained because you were operating on a thin staff to begin with, and now we need an arts administrator that we don't have, that we can, you know, use a little elbow grease to help you out if you need it.
Yeah, and, and this is really helpful and that's what's great about having a special meeting. We get this input so that when it does go to council, it's very clear and concise. So we appreciate very much your input.
Yeah, right. It, it's not meant to, I certainly hope it isn't meant to insult or denigrate anybody. It's strictly to prepare the thing for public consumption and city council consumption.
Absolutely.
So this is all, you know, may seem like trivial detail, but when you get to the end of the line and you're trying to get somebody to get behind you, you'd rather they don't have a lot of questions and you just want them to say, "This is great, I get it."
It's taken in the spirit that you intended.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to make sure because-
So just, just to clarify, do we want to use the wording from Exhibit 1, which is initiate process, public utility infrastructure, maybe the top one's just called permanent art, I don't know. Do you want those to be the subjects instead of citywide neighborhood performing? I see what you're saying.
Well, yeah, no, I-
So that if you look at the one, it relates, translates to the other, but which way do you want it?
Yeah, I mean, if you can, this, this might be absolutely appropriate and perfectly fine when you're looking at it as a timeline, but maybe if you had, you know, some kind of identifier on each of these points, you could reference it in parentheses and there aren't any, you know, the, the hard thing is not having identifiers. You know, when you have a fourth bullet point or a third bullet point, there's no way to refer somebody back to something easily. And on the temporary arts program, like when you're talking about that, are you meaning that that is the, is that the neighborhood, you know, where, where, I'm, I'm just curious, where does that fall? I mean, it seems that the whole, if you put public arts and cultural initiatives, then you've, you've really embraced everything. If you just put that at the top, but if there's some way that you could relate these different things here to something on the master outline, which is this document, that would be great and it would help us understand what we're talking about.
Okay, yeah, I, I see what you're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, and it's, you know-
We'll see what we can do to make it more clear.
And I'm, have, you know, like I said, if you meet somebody like, "Okay, well, it was your right idea, Vidor, you take a stab at it. That's fair."
So, Mike, to clarify, are we able to send a draft and take feedback from them in between now and approval, or how does that work?
Chairs to Hockey and then Commission, what you can, you can take into account feedback, but it would have to be presented, you know, and discussed in, in the next meeting.
Okay, well, then I guess that, that answers that question.
Well, I'm thinking what might work is if you refer back to 1 through 4 under public arts and cultural initiatives, clarifying which falls under citywide, neighborhood, performing arts and arts.
Yeah.
And we could just add that as the, the first thing on both the timeline and the budget as it relates to the work plan. Maybe that would make it more clear.
Right, just a cross-reference would be helpful because, you know, without the structure, then confusion happens and that's where people are like, "Well, I don't know," you know, it's a, it's a way to, to just clarify something so there's no way to weasel out of it.
But I didn't want to interrupt while you're going through your list, but, you know, personally, I was going to share the exact same feedback. I'd like the budget and the timeline to match exactly the work plan, word for word. So when we say, you know, initiate process for permanent art, landmark art project, that's the only thing I want to see any other time that it's referenced because it is, it is confusing. I was actually going through our public arts and culture initiatives and I was trying to put a line item budget next to each one. And I think I only know what the budget is for two of them, which is $110,000 for permanent art project and $60,000 for diverse programs and events on the last item. And in between, I, I can't identify how much any of those individually cost. So if, if we can revise it so that everything matches exactly, it would, it would help. Because if, if we're having trouble, I imagine council's going to have trouble and then when the public sees that I agree with Commissioner Vidor, it's, it's going to be a little bit confusing to follow.
So you're speaking of a controlled vocabulary and cross-referencing. We're librarians, we're good at that.
Great. And, and I want to thank you because it's, this has been, I mean, we've had so many meetings just to get to this point and, and staff has been taking a lot of feedback and incorporating it. So the, it takes a ton of work to get this far. And I'm glad we have this special meeting to kind of sort through some of these because it does need to be done in public.
We'll have as many, we'll, we'll have as many as we need, right?
Yeah, exactly.
I have a question. Are we gonna, I'm so sorry.
No, this is okay.
Are we going to each give our like questions and then go through each kind of point, like each budget item? I'm confused as to what we're going to be doing exactly today. Are we going to go through everything one by one together?
Why don't I, I'll, Commissioner Vidor, do you have more on your?
Yeah, just one more and it had to do with that whole librarian thing. If you're using an acronym, I noticed G, believe it or not, when I saw G, G A R, I think it was Glendale Library Arts and Culture, I hadn't seen that before. So any acronym you're using, make sure you use it consistently and spell it out the first time and then make the abbreviation. Even things like full-time, you know, I mean, we know what that means, but it, it sounds really trivial, but it, it's not when it comes to the public looking at it.
I can go through a quick shortlist and then maybe after that, what we can do is, if commission is open to that, go through each item one by one and then come back around that way. So I'll just kind of make a few, just want to make sure.
I'm done.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Vidor.
Right.
Thank you. Just want to make sure.
Yeah.
So just kind of more, I'll try to keep it a little bit broad and then we can go through one by one because I think it's a good suggestion. And so, so I'm looking at this and we're saying that it's about $926,000 over two years. So based on the urban art program being at 7 million, that would mean it's approximately 14 years of money being spent. But, but there's also the other caveat that obviously there will be new money coming into urban art program, maybe not as much as in the past. And then also with the increase to 2%, the policy analysis, that may help bring influx of money, but we should be mindful of how much we're actually spending per year because, you know, we want to make sure this is sustainable and we don't spend it all in two years and then commission, future commissions don't have funding to spend on public art projects. And so I, you know, hopefully my numbers are correct, but it's 926 total, $420,000 first year, $506,000 second year. So, you know, one thing that jumped out at me is approximately 53% of our urban art program is going to be spent on events, on, on perhaps one or two events. Just as one, Commissioner, I'm not comfortable spending $250,000 a year on an event that happens one day and it's gone the next. And, you know, I think, you know, when you look at what happens with something really simple, beyond the box, you, you put up a utility box, it's a nice design and the neighborhood comes together, they're there for the installation, they, they are honking as they go by. And every day they wake up, that is there to beautify their neighborhood and that's a small expense. It's, I think, it's, is it $900 per artist that we budget or $750?
$750 plus cleaning and so forth.
Yeah, so I mean, that's a very small budget item, but it, it has an impact for that circle of immediate neighbors that live in that area. So when I compare that to a $250,000 event that happens one day and it's gone, I'm just not comfortable with that balance. Whereas that's going to stay for, for many years. So, so on that one, and also from just a different perspective, I agree, I think the examples, I, I prefer that the examples aren't here at all. I think those are more discussion items in each one. When we bring them back as items, we're going to end up discussing and fully vetting, you know, which are the partners we want to work with, who, what types of events, and then somebody doesn't read something like the bean and kind of think, "What is that?" And, and also with some of these, and that's where I think helping, having fixed words help because, you know, this would go to council, hopefully by December it gets approved and with their support, of course. The earliest any of these items actually get started working on is January. So I don't see how in 2019 we're spending $250,000 on, even if it was approved, on any event. I, I just don't see that happening. So I prefer it's not even there or it's a trimmed-down budget. But, but, you know, we, I think we, the budget can't be so tight that it doesn't give flexibility because an artist may come with a great idea that we would love, that council would love, the city would love, and then we can't do it because we've kind of tied ourselves too tight. But at the same time, I, I don't think it, we should go so overboard that, you know, if we know we're not going to spend anywhere near that, it should not be on the budget at that level. And then the, the other item, the, yeah, so looking at some of the timeline items, I think, you know, timeline will impact kind of how much we're budgeting because if we know that we're not going to spend that much, it doesn't have to necessarily be there. The other thing too is I, you know, I want to really see them match so that you actually can tell what we should be budgeting. So for example, I believe we had approved previously $1,000 per exhibition for the Adams Square Mini Park gas station for that temporary period. And I think it's a total of four exhibitions per year plus one that the association does, the holiday.
Yeah, the, the holiday one is, is funded by the association.
So, so in that example, you know, that, then we know that the budget is, you know, 5,000 per year. And that should be a model, perhaps a little bit less, perhaps a little bit more for what the launch temporary art programs in one to two neighborhoods per year could be. It could be five, it could be 10, you know, to give flexibility. But, but it's, you know, it's kind of hard to judge what that is on the, on the budget item because we, we've got temporary art kind of clumped together. So if we can kind of, once they all, all the kind of wording and, and items match, if we can really look carefully at each of these, just to make sure- we can really look carefully at each of these, just to make sure we're not overestimating because it matters, you know, if we, if this commission says we're gonna spend $500,000 a year, you know, four years from now, when, you know, there's five new people up here, they're gonna say, oh, the commission was spending $500,000 a year, that's what we're supposed to be doing. And, and it may not be the fact, it may be less, maybe it should be more, but that's, you know, the numbers matter for that reason because we're trying to sustain the, the dollars we're spending.
Can I ask a question about your, I know you're, you're in your thing, but is the 250 related to the budget of Glendale's open art, Glendale Arts Open Festival? Is that what they spent?
No, I pulled that, I put UAPP, that was Barbara's amount for a large-scale city event, so that's where that number came from. And no, I think their budget's way less than that.
Yeah, and I think with some of these too, the, so for the annual public art event, I mean, that's gonna have to come back as an individual item so we can fully discuss because I know we've talked about Art Walk, we've talked about Art Week, we've talked about kind of a community meeting town hall style where we're talking about the Arts and Culture Commission and the projects. So it may be a combination of this, but, but that will obviously affect the budget greatly. But, but $250,000 is a little bit more than I'm comfortable with as a one commissioner. So with that, do you wanna, is there any follow-up question on that or should we go one item at a time and dive deeper into?
Yeah, I think we should go one item at a time now.
Great, so why don't we start with the permanent art landmark project?
My question with that actually is, are we doing just one landmark piece? That was what we planned, right? But when we say permanent art, we're also discussing having other permanent art around the city, it's just that that one piece is the landmark piece. Because I don't want it to be just one permanent piece and then a bunch of temporary pieces coming and going and which will actually cost more long-term. What was the exact plan that we had?
I think what we had initially discussed, and please correct me, is that it, it is that one landmark signature piece and it would be something that would stay for years, possibly decades even, and something that would be an identifier for Glendale, something that would draw people out. It would actually be people wanting to go see it.
Yeah.
It's not something you casually walk by and just enjoy. It's something, it's kind of an event tied to it. And, and the bean word, it keeps coming up because we, we use kind of the Chicago bean as an example. We looked at Amsterdam, I think it's IM Amsterdam and those types of signage and kind of landmark permanent pieces. And, and the reason why the budget kind of scales up is because the, first, it's the process of identifying, getting community input, where does it go, where does it not go, how big, how small, and then it's something that would not necessarily be accomplished in our, in the next two years.
Yeah.
But it's something that would be a midterm goal that would come back at a future meeting, but the work has, the groundwork has to start now.
So would that be the only permanent art that we're discussing?
I believe so.
So everything else is gonna be?
At least what we've discussed so far.
Everything else would be temporary around the city, even the city gateways, I'm still confused.
Could I, could I ask in between, because the thing is that we have talked about the landmark artwork and also we have talked about permanent artwork, let's say on reservoirs or whatever in the city that it makes the city look pretty. It is kind of not temporary, but maybe for quite many years. But landmark is a little bit, I see it as a different than other stuff that we have to make the city beautiful, to cover whatever doesn't look as nice and et cetera, or different artworks that would be precious to have around. But landmark is something that City of Glendale would be identified by, so.
Okay, then we should probably add in that, I'm, I'm sure we already discussed this for the examples, having it be called the landmark or iconic piece under permanent art, but I'm just wondering, aren't we gonna want more permanent art around the city later down the line? And right now, that's just the only one we're worrying for this specific work plan for the next two years to come.
For 2019, 2020.
Okay, okay.
I think that was one of the discussion items for future work plans that we would bring back.
So to clarify, because I'm looking at how to reformat using the same language, I don't know if we should look at page two of the document and like, look at budgeting for those bullet items so that maybe the, the table that I created will put it in the four sections, which is citywide, neighborhood arts, performing arts, and arts and cultural events.
Yeah.
And then, as you can see, we're not organizing them by permanent or temporary, but allocating specific to that language. So, I mean, I, I think I went over, like moved to the umbrella idea because I think you're not as constrained. What temporary art is it? Is it, if it doesn't fall into that category, is it a budgeted thing? But if this is what we agreed upon and you guys want me to take, you know, citywide arts and then we'll have four lines underneath it and then you allocate based on that, then I could just restructure that table to look like that and dump that into the timeline. So what I would maybe suggest is as you talk through budget, maybe look at those bullet points and then we'll write the numbers down and just make that, that's an easy adjustment, really. Does that make sense?
That would be really helpful.
Going through page two.
Yeah, so maybe use that rather than the document I created. I mean, the, the document I created has some numbers that maybe would translate over a little bit, but, and then we'll take direction and I'll just reformat it like that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, we could just mesh the two together.
But, but just for clarification though, I would, and please, if I'm the only one, put me on an island, but, you know, I do want a line item per actual bullet as the, you know, we need the buckets, of course, but, you know, to actually, because I know that if, if I'm not asking that question, our council members probably will ask that question and it's a.
I totally agree with you. I didn't put it that way, but I, I was, you said what I was trying to say much better than the way I said it.
No, it's great.
And I completely agree with you. I think it'll help all of us in the end.
So just to clarify though, and maybe we have it as one, as a bolded area, citywide arts, highly visible art, and then 1A is initiate process for permanent. So if, if you want any of the language to be different on your table or in this document, this would probably be the time to cut words or change them to say what you want them to say as well. And we'll take direction like that.
I mean, I think the, I think the language on page two, everyone's comfortable with because we've gone through this a few times.
Okay.
Yeah, and you can elaborate on it, you know, in your examples, are you gonna have examples on your table or were you taking them out? No? Okay. Well, it could be like a comment or clarification if you don't want actual examples, but I think the idea of mentioning that this is our first go-around for an iconic impactful piece of city identifiable art or whatever language we used before is, that's what that first item is and that's also the first item on your, under your citywide art thing. So it's actually already in agreement, it just maybe needs to be tightened up a little.
I wanna, I'm gonna have to look at the last work plan because it seemed to me like there was more elaboration beyond, it was like there was the table that had the numbers, but then it seemed like something followed it that was more explanation of what would fall into that category maybe.
We had a description, we had a description for each.
Right, so I'll, I'll look back at that and see if we could do something similar to that, if that makes sense. I'll have to go back and look at that document again. Okay.
So, so starting from, I guess the, so citywide, we have citywide arts, neighborhood arts, performing arts, and arts and cultural events. So we would need, I mean, let's, maybe we can start with, do we have the established budgets for each of the existing programs? Beyond the Box, Adam Square Mini Park Gas Station, 222 East Brand Plaza. So maybe that will already kind of fill out where, where we are in the past and perhaps a little bit more if we wanted to, because I know with Beyond the Box, we've talked about adding signage and some other items that could make that cost more. And then I think the, you know, one through three on citywide arts, initiate process for permanent art landmark art project, establish temporary art placement program, and then identify public utilities are a little bit more ambiguous and they'll be new projects, so we would need, I think, staff direction on what we think those individual items should be budgeted at. For example, identify public utilities, infrastructure sites, the identification of that would take probably the first year alone. And so that probably, you're not really allocating money for those installations to happen. That won't come till 2020 at the earliest, so it's more of, I guess, a staffing, you know, is that a consultant, is that the overarching consultant, is that our full-time administrator in terms of who would do the planning work in year one and then year two is when you actually spend money on the arts projects themselves. And then establish a temporary art placement program is very similar, I think there needs to be a strategy behind it developed and then, you know, call for artists. So, and then the permanent landmark art project, so on that one though, where, where we kind of do have a budget, are we allocating $100,000 in 2020 for the actual implementation or is that, because we go from 10 to 100, so what's the, what's the difference there for year one, year two?
10 is for the consultant to do the job, the legwork, and the 100,000 is allocating for the actual landmark that is going to be established. So that's basically how they have done it.
Is that the case though? Because I think 100 may not be enough for the actual project and I don't know if we intended to actually have the project in this first work plan done.
I'd like to address that really quickly.
I, I think it would be a good idea maybe to take that 100,000 and cut that in half. And I say that because when I created the timeline, I really saw that there was gonna be a lot more work that's gonna be done on the front end in terms of getting community buy-in, finding the location, doing the research, finding the artist, identifying the materials and the cost for either installation or construction. And so I think that it would probably be 2021, you're really looking at getting that bean out. So I probably would look at the 2020 cost being half of that and really getting more into the details of what that's gonna be involved, what's gonna be involved. And then from there, that cost would be estimated based on the proposal from the artist at the end of 2020.
Yes, because you know, based on the fact that if something is the landmark and identifying City of Glendale is 100,000 and for one day or one week event, we are spending 250,000, kind of that does not sound right. We should kind of reverse the situation if possible.
Yeah, I think that it would take a bit longer, I mean, just knowing how the, how things work, so that's my recommendation.
Great, thank you.
Could I ask a question, Chaperson, sorry. We have, when you talked about budget, it always makes me spring Jane worry that the amount of money and the way we need to spend for years. Being with Glendale Unified School District for many years and at least half of it doesn't that mean, you know, we need to have, I've repeatedly said that, you know, since my time is kind of getting to its end, I need to work on that. We need to have a system of getting grants. Glendale Unified School District, at the given time that we became known all over California, we still are, but at the given time, it was based on the fact that we had a great grant writer and we were getting a lot, millions of dollars coming to different projects and programs that made the city flourish. So we need to have a system that we are at least great donors in the city of, in California or in City of Glendale, that they would allocate or they would have us as an organization or a city or a commission, I don't know how this should be word, that they could allocate some money from their trust funds, from whatever inheritance and et cetera, that could be used for the art and culture commissions, art projects and plans. We need to have, sustain ourselves besides the construction, that after a time it's going to get saturated. We need to have another source of money coming in and it should be an identified source so that we could live for longer and if one day we do not have the constructions, we would still continue to be the landmark.
Commissioner, in fact, you know, that is the hope for, if we were allowed to have a permanent position, that that would be a major responsibility of that individual. That said, we're not waiting for that, there's an opportunity that was just announced the other day with a statewide grant and we will, staff will be participating in a webinar in the next few weeks and hopefully if it makes sense for us, applying for that large state grant. So we, we are on the same page there with you.
Thank you very much. That's very important because I've noticed that different organizations that they intend to make donations, they have names already that there might be an applicant. So kind of they, they work on us as well. So starting and getting that initiative, being part of, they know that this is a place that they can spend their money well and well remembered, so it becomes a tradition as well to start early. Thank you very much for starting and doing, I saw it actually on the internet that you guys are applying for. Very good, thank you. I appreciate it.
I also, I believe when we've talked about the full-time administrator, think that that's another important argument for it, that the person has some kind of development background as well. I think right now we're constrained because it takes time to identify grants, apply for them, and then carry them forward if you do get them, but I do suggest very strongly that when we hire, that that person does have a background in that.
Could I make a suggestion in that direction as well? There are some people who are just grant writers and Glendale Unified used to have one of those at the beginning, but later on we found out that you can, there, there's a market for people who are grant writers. And then when you have an RFP of a certain thing or when you, there's a special money that you want to get, there are people who are known and famous and they get a commission if they get that grant for you. So actually, we were not having them as hired staff, but we were paying for them on contract whenever need be because they were known specifically for certain kind of grants that they were getting. So we can look into the market as well because it's a special talent. These people know the wording, they know, they study the community, they are so, such an expert in the field that they know what they need to write to get the exact amounts that is needed. So we can either have a trained person hired, but that's a little bit difficult because that's specific, or we can hire people as need be who are going to do, but there should be a budget allocated to that. But these people get based on the commission, that's why it's so good, because if they don't get it, they, they don't get the money. But if they get it, we have it back.
If the latter, we, we would likely just pay the person for the, the labor done, the commission becomes, can become problematic, so, but we would look to that.
Thank you.
Question, are you, who's has the floor? I totally forgot.
Commissioner Vidor has the floor.
All right, okay, I'll take it. What's the status of the job description for the position? Does any, because, you know, I really did want to talk to my council member who appointed me about, you know, explaining the staffing needs of a situation that we have here, so I mean, I'm very enthusiastic about being able to do that.
So our colleague Maria Sandin has created a job description for us, so Nikki and I are reviewing that and, you know, it's making sure it's in the proper city format, which we believe it is, and, and then we can potentially share that with you.
For the next meeting.
With council's approval, yes.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner, can I say something? Commissioner, it's an excellent idea because it's good for us to know exactly what we need to convince our council member and discuss it so they would know how important it is and what is exactly that job entitled to. So that, that's a great idea, Commissioner Vidor, and thank you for, so next meeting we'll have that, I suppose. Thank you.
Yes, should not be a problem.
So I have a question. So going back to the line, the item, so I know that we want to obviously up the budget for the actual piece, which is a very good idea because it's gonna be here for a while and we want it to be something that looks like how much we paid, but I'm just going back to that consultant fee for some reason because it's, it's gonna take four quarters or a year for the consultant to work on this and I'm just wondering if 10,000 is gonna be enough and how outreach might take? I mean, obviously we're gonna be starting in 2019, I'm just wondering how 10,000 will be working for one year for the consultant? If, if, is that enough? I don't know, is that gonna be too little, is that too long for them?
I think that 10,000 and I, and maybe I wasn't clear, was really just for that portion of the consultant's work that would involve doing research for the landmark iconic art, permanent art piece. The budget that was written into the other pieces were, was including the consultant's work in those pieces. So that wouldn't be, so if you want us to line item and separate how much a consultant budget would be, that certainly could be done differently and based on the, the new budget, kind of organization that we've been discussing, I think that would work in that new format. So we'd be removing the pieces from the budget of implementing the art and putting it into a separate line item just for consultant's fees. Would that be easier to understand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll probably have another meeting before we get to vote on this because you have to go back and you're gonna have to obviously reformat the entire table and then bring it back and we're gonna have another meeting and then we're gonna vote on it the next time. vote on it the next time. So I assume we're not going to be voting on this November 15th unless we have another meeting before that. Is that what the plan is right now?
We'll have to, we'll have to play it by ear based on how far we get. So, I mean, it will be on our action agenda in November. If Commission's comfortable moving forward, we can vote on it if we need another meeting. We can either call another special meeting or bring it back in December.
Yeah, and I think the possibility is there. We've gotten some really great direction in terms of where to move it so that it is all aligned, but also in terms of budgeting. Chuck's been, Chuck Wyke for Library Arts and Culture has been significantly involved in all the past projects, so he can certainly lean on his knowledge of the budget and basically leverage what's been done and build from that. So I think that if we write a clarification document in addition to our work plan for commission, I think that would help a lot in terms of explaining some of these issues. So that's helpful.
Just to clarify, is the, are we doing something to the $10,000? I didn't quite grasp what we were going to do with the consultant fee, line item separation. We've got 10,000 listed here. Are there, and is that the entire budget for consulting fee?
No.
No? Okay.
So that was just for an initial fee, and then the presumption was that the remaining fees would come out of other monies earmarked for that specific project. What Maria was just suggesting was if you, if Commission would like, we can break out, you know, again, it's an estimate of what we think that the total cost would be. But I think that can also paint us into a bit of a corner if we find like the exact consultant is this amount of money. So I think the 10,000 was meant as a placeholder to get us started on the project.
Thank you.
And then any other questions under citywide arts before we go on to the next one?
Well, I'm looking at, it says establish a temporary art placement program, and I'm trying to remember what we discussed because under neighborhood arts, it says launch temporary art programs in one to two neighborhoods. I can't remember what the, what was the difference between those two for the temporary art programs. There's one under citywide and one under neighborhood arts. So what was the difference? One was, sorry.
I think they got a little confusion here, so we can certainly pull them out. For example, we've been working with a couple of city agencies about a mural project and painting some walls on some vacant buildings. And those would be the temporary projects. In addition to, we talked about doing things within a certain community. So we would commission or talk to the community, see what they wanted, whether it was any kind of play or sculpture or performance. And so those were very separate ones, where the neighborhood being out in the community and in more rural, I mean, residential areas, and the temporary arts being more in the business, kind of more well-trafficked area. So that was the differential between the two.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it's a language fine tuning, but they should be in both places?
Right. I mean, they're kind of both the same thing. They're both temporary art, so that's why they were grouped together. But if we go back to what you had on your initial page in terms of the work plan, those will be drawn separately.
Yeah, so they're separate here, and on here, they are together. How are we going to move forward? Did you guys want to keep it separate or keep them together if we do this? How exactly?
I think the future, I think the next, the version of the budget would match exactly the plan. So it would be separated in that case. But one thing that might help with that is maybe we need to add the word citywide to the, establish a citywide temporary art program, a placement program, and then for the neighborhood one, launch a neighborhood temporary arts program in one to two neighbors per year.
So just vocabulary.
Back to the language on this cover sheet.
I guess we did have changes on the language on this one.
All right.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
But you're right, that does, I mean, if I was just glancing at it, I'd be confused as well.
It looks like it's just placed in two different places. So for the public utility, that 25,000 budget I'm looking at right now, is that, I mean, wasn't there supposed to be somebody, the consultant's job to find the infrastructure, do the research? So is that including that 25,000 budget? What is that budget specifically?
Right, so there was a list in the private meeting or the special session that we had. Yeah, sorry, my mind's blank.
Public special meeting, just for clarification.
Yeah, there was a list that you all came up with that I think was a really strong one. So certainly that was included, but we didn't include that in some of the examples because we were trying to limit what examples we provided. But that was something that you all had come up with. There's also a list of locations and ideas that was in, that was in the urban art program plan. So that'll be incorporated altogether. Now, when we do, I think we had discussed about adding descriptions to these categories, and that's something we can certainly add in there. But I think we had talked about removing examples. So, but they were all already, they've already been identified. A lot of them have already been identified. So it's really less about research and more about doing the homework of working with the city agencies, getting the permits if we need them, getting the art supplies, finding the artists and that.
Is that going to be staff or the consultant?
Hopefully, that would be a consultant.
Okay. So that would be including a consultant fee in there?
Yeah, the consultant fee is included in that, the total cost.
Consultant and artist as well and the material. We have used, spent that money already for several years. We have had that project and it has worked very well. Well, before, our staff were doing it. Now, the long-term kind of one year, I suppose, consultant that is going to do the job of admin staff for the commission would have that as part of her or his workload.
Yes.
Yes. And the money basically is spent, not for the consultant in that area, but it would be spent more the way we have done it before on the project.
Maybe. I mean, I think that, you know, it's been run very well, but it's, you have to remember, too, that you've been a little limited in terms of what you guys have been able to do. And the idea of doing this big urban art program plan was to really expand the projects, make them bigger, have more projects, have more initiatives, and really build on what's been done. So in order to build on that, we can't really leverage more staff because we've been able to do what we've been able to do. So, so the reason that we have the consultant fee in there is really to expand what you all are doing and support that.
But, you know, let me refresh your memory on that. Since we have the RFP for that kind of a project, and since a committee gets together and artists are absolutely willing to be part of, we don't need to go and find them, they come and find us, kind of. So the money is being spent mostly on the project because it is, it's a repetition of whether we don't need to create a very new RFP even for the, getting the artist to do it. So I know that we need to spend some time because there, the salary of the person has to somehow, a portion of it would be used. But there are things that less time would take for the staff person, temporary staff person, and there are things that it's major and they need to spend more time on it. So the 25,000, this has been by experience what we have spent on the project mostly. And we have more or less materials and information and procedures already set that could make it doable. Not all projects, but that one, the utility box has got that. We are very set on that.
Just for clarification, this is different than the beyond the box. This is outside the...
Besides the beyond the box?
Yeah, this is identifying new public utilities.
Okay.
Maybe we should call it outside the box.
I think that's our removing examples. And the concept to remove the examples was really to allow more, you know, organic opportunities to come forward so the commission could be more flexible and responsive.
Are you going through your list?
No, I was just doing a second one.
I just had a couple of questions on this whole box plus thing. I think it's really important, this isn't something that's going to change any of this paperwork, but that this thing about interacting with and having some formal kind of regimented, for lack of a better word, way of interacting with different departments is going to be really important because public utilities, I think, will, you know, even to the point of assigning somebody to be a coordinator, that would really help move this along. And then I had another thing, but I forgot, so.
I like that, Arlene, and I think that if we can draw out in the, in the work plan, that this, the success of this is really dependent on that collaboration.
Yes.
I think that would be a really cool point to add.
And I just thought of the other thing, which was a public input, because I started to get unsolicited public input from people about why isn't this painted, or this could be decorated, or this could become part of a sculpture even though it's a public utility. So, you know, I think, I think it would be interesting, and I don't know if that would just be organic or if it would be something initiated, but to have a, you know, a place where people could go with their ideas. And so, you know, maybe on the website development, there's a little portal to, you know, just sling it at us, you know?
Well, I think that's one of the reasons that we had considered taking the existing site that you had for submissions and feedback on the urban art plan, to really leverage that, reframe it, rebuild it, and continue that dialogue so that people are already familiar with that site, the location. We can rebuild it from, and present the new reborn Arts and Culture Commission, and use that same kind of philosophy where people could give input on locations, ideas, artists, things like that. So absolutely, that should be part of the marketing. If that's not clear, we can certainly draw that out, but that's definitely part of that.
So this is not with the beyond the box budget within it?
Kind of all over the map right now.
Yeah. Is it, so public utility infrastructure enhancements, is that a merger of beyond the box and?
Yes.
Okay, so it's included.
Beyond the box is included, and the implication was that it would, we would add to that more type of things.
How much is that exactly? Do we know the number?
I think, was it say 25?
750 per box, 12 to 15 per round, two, three rounds a year, two rounds?
What was that? I'm just, I'm looking at that, and then I'm looking at the temporary art.
15, 20, 15,000 to 20,000 per year.
How much?
About 20,000 per year.
So there's only an extra 5,000 technically?
And we could build more on that. So certainly if we're removing a good portion of the second year of the landmark art piece, and then we're significantly cutting the event from the 250,000, we have some room to move that money over to this, and I think that that'd be the best.
Well, I was about to say that I think because the beyond the box is already there and we're just maintaining it, and the temporary art, I think we had said that we want to focus on the permanent art and the temporary art. And so I think the budget for temporary art might be too small because we're focusing on these neighborhoods that we want to enhance, like, let's say, South Glendale, and we want to do something big there. 15,000 might not be enough. I mean, I'm wondering if that's specifically for the project itself, or is that part of another fee in there?
For temporary art?
Yeah.
Well, I think, like we had mentioned earlier, that temporary art and neighborhood art are kind of, are separate, even though that one's part of another. So when we do the definitions and redo the budget, we will certainly identify them as separate items.
So it's two different programs in this one thing, and it's a $15,000 budget, which I, in my opinion, might be too small for something that we're separating to two different programs that we are wanting to focus on. I mean, we talked about the permanent art and definitely adding to that instead of 100,000, making it a bigger budget. So in my opinion, and we can discuss this, maybe making the budget for temporary art larger because those are the things that we want to focus on specifically. So I want to hear what you guys have to say about that.
Well, in the case of, I know we're jumping around a little bit, but in the, so beyond the box, there's a fixed cost where we kind of already know. Identify public utilities and infrastructure sites for potential arts projects. I thought we had, it's specifically written that way because we didn't believe that would happen overnight. So it's actually a process of identifying it. That's happening in the short-term plan. And so if this was like a separate line item, it's either a zero budget impact, or it's a, you know, whatever consultant may cost to manage that. And then the, in the case of the temporary art, again, you know, Adam Square Mini Park, it's at least 5,000 a year. If we're saying we're going to expand that, right, we want one more neighborhood in the first year, so that's at least 10,000. And then if we want a third neighborhood added by the second year, that's at least, you know, 10,000 first year, 15,000 second year. That's assuming just on the minimums.
So we're thinking 10,000 per neighborhood?
5,000 per neighborhood, but you're adding a second neighborhood in year one. And then if we add a third neighborhood year two, it'd be 5,000 for each neighborhood times two and then times three.
It works up to 15,000. But that was only for the neighborhoods. She's saying that the citywide temporary arts also...
Right. That's why it may, yeah, it's probably not enough if we're talking about a citywide one as well.
How much do you think you're going to take, do you have a feel or something in your mind for reducing the 250,000 on that annual arts public event so that we can reallocate some money to maybe both, both of those, the temporary arts in the neighborhoods, maybe up that a little bit, and also the public utility that if we were to find another public utility, say one, that, you know, could be executed during this work plan, that we would have enough money for it. So not a lot of money, but just, you know, upping it a little bit, maybe from 25 to 30,000 and then 20,000 each for the temporary arts program. That's just an idea. That might not be enough really, but...
Yeah, I was, I would, I put those amounts just as what I saw from former plans and suggestions. So that's completely up to commission, what you want to set aside for arts events or large-scale programs, art walk, whatever. But, so under neighborhood arts, so we're going to keep Adam Square Mini Park as a separate bullet, correct? So that would be 5,000 each year for that. So we wouldn't lump that into the launch temporary arts program, one to two new neighborhoods a year. Did I hear that you wanted to allocate?
So we were, we were saying if we estimated 5,000 for Adam Square Mini Park gas station exhibition series, then assuming the next neighborhood was going to do some type of similar program, and it may be different, that's the other reason why we shouldn't be so tight on to this. But assuming it was a minimum of five, then if we added a second neighborhood in year one, so now that would be 10 total for two neighborhoods, Adam Square Mini Park and another. So actually, sorry, not to confuse it, Adam Square Mini Park line item would be 5-5.
Okay.
But the top one, launch temporary art programs in one to two neighborhoods per year, you know, that's, that would be 5-5, or 5-10 at least, unless we wanted to do 10-20, if we thought we can add two this year, two in the coming year and then four.
Do you want 10-10 in the optimistic outlook that you'd do two per year?
5-5 sounds better. Let's start with 5-5 and then we'll go on and see how it goes.
Well, this one is one to two per year, though. So it'd be 5-10 at least, 15 over the two-year plan.
Yes.
So five first year, 10 second year.
Or having two of them.
Right.
So are we talking about the temporary arts program in the neighborhoods?
Yes.
Okay.
And then actually, under the, the second bullet, produce culturally diverse and inclusive programs, that was the one at the very bottom that I mentioned as example would be cultural heritage events or things like that. So again, that's, I don't even know where I came up with the 30,000, if it was 2,000 to 3,000 per month, or, you know, whatever it was that I put in there. But that would be, again, what, what you guys would be comfortable with in terms of cultural programming.
I think those are two separate as well, actually. We had one under neighborhood arts, which was more neighborhood-based, and then we had one under the bottom arts and cultural events bucket, which was specifically downtown. It was arts entertainment district or arts office.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Where assuming construction's not happening in the next year, and events can't happen there, that we'd support some activities down there.
So would the commission be comfortable or want us to add a bullet under arts and cultural events? That would be just cultural programming offered by Library Arts and Culture Department and other partner organizations? Because neither one of those two encompasses, unless you count cultural programming at the library as part of your neighborhood setting?
Certainly makes sense to put, if you really want to have defined cultural heritage celebrations, to put that in there so that there's, you know, just to the whole general point of making the verbiage and descriptions equivalent of both. And that's an important aspect of bullet, of item number four in the urban art program. Example, do you consider the Dia de Muertos, the Day of the Dead, a cultural heritage?
Yes.
Like, so what are some of the existing things we've done in the last year or so that would fall into that bucket? Just so I have a, like a vision.
Yeah, well, just this week, we're the Philippine Heritage Week. That's a really, that's a really big one. We've done, we've spoken with Monica, I'm not sure what her, I'm sorry, my, her, her last name's blank. She's the curator for the Korean Comfort Women, and she's spoken about hosting a big event in the park for K-pop and having a big stage and having a Korean cultural weekend. So it's definitely things that we've been in discussion and we've already been involved with.
And I would just suggest, and it's that we...
And I would just suggest, and it's, uh, that we, I, I understand the sentiment of heritage and I think that is important and I would encompass that, but could also limit us. So for instance, an LGBT event might not be considered cultural heritage, but it's still cultural. So we might want to use the verbiage cultural, but it's up to you.
Right. I, I, the bullet I was thinking would be cultural programming with Glendale Libraries and Culture or other partner organizations. That was what I was thinking the bullet could say. The cultural heritage programming was just in the example box, you know? In my previous position, we had a month, you know, if it was Mexican-American Heritage Month, we did some kind of, um, programming around that or African-American Heritage Month or Asian-Pacific Islander. All of those things could fall under it as well as other cultural programming. So it's really a very broad topic.
How much budget? Have you allocated thirty thousand?
Well, just to clarify on that point also though, is, it's not to say that we in ourselves are going to be launching these events. Um, that's the other part, just to kind of clarify because, you know, Dia de los Muertos is happening, but, uh, you know, I think the department is partnering with a number of partners to, to put it on.
Right.
So it's not saying that we're going to take that budget and make it the commission's job to pay for the entire event either. So I think it's, it's, it's us complementing those programs that are happening and something we can add as a commission.
Promote and, and talk about them and yes, because if it is, it gets into budgeting, it would be infinite because we have such a diverse community and everybody would like to have, you know, things funded by that. My question to think is that, now Central Library offers a lot of, and also Brand does, a lot of things that has to do with cultural heritage and history and, you know, et cetera. Would that get any kind of support from commission or not? Because the things that we have in the Central Library, actually in the auditorium presentations that are being done and also the Reflect Space is a major, major touching of all whatever culture. So is that kind of, we assume that city budget and not art fund or how does it work?
I, I would, um, argue or ask that commission consider, um, that we're getting input from council, that it is the Arts and Culture Commission, not the Arts Commission. And so, uh, yet the library is doing lots of cultural programming, we are acting as a steward, um, and we are also a gatekeeper, if we can be so bold as to say, um, so that it's not just funding any kind of programming that someone deems is cultural, um, but that it would be beneficial and would be within the purview of the committee to, to fund cultural events that are happening at the library. That would be just a statement I would put out there. It's ultimately up to the commission whether they agree and see fit to do that.
Could I say something in red light? I mean, if we do that, then, uh, I absolutely agree that what is being done is major and it is not just, uh, feasts and holidays and et cetera celebrated, but important issues that bring to, brings to the community's attention that what world has gone through and all the people that live in the city. If we fund it, that's fine, but what happens is that if it gets the funding from the Arts and Culture Commission, then it needs to come to the commission, not that necessarily I like the idea, but basically it needs to come to the commission for the approval. Otherwise, when it is done by the city staff, then it is at the discretion of the city staff and the leader of the, um, the library to make decision on what is being put. So as far as funding, if it, it needs to get some funding, absolutely, I agree, they do the best, but, um, then it has to be on the jurisdiction. So it needs to be discussed in that direction.
Yeah, it would be discussed and it would be presented ahead of time and you would say yes, yay or nay to whichever.
Well, I mean, I think if general fund is funding a, like Reflect Space was built without commission input, it was a department decision. Um, I don't think we should be transferring responsibility, general fund to the commission.
And I wasn't interjecting Reflect Space, I was saying cultural programs, but that was your, it was brought up, yes.
Sure. Yeah, so I mean, if there's a, if there's a commission-specific exhibition that we wanted to do in Reflect Space, I think that's where it makes more sense, but that's above and beyond what Reflect Space is programming themselves.
Um, I think an example of how this could play out would be the Faces Places, um, film screening that's happening, and that was something that commission has endorsed. It's happening next month, I believe, in November.
Yes, November, thirteenth of eight.
But it's, part of it is the funding, obviously, um, we could enhance cultural programming if we had financial support, but it's also, we really want to help build what commission is funding and being recognized for and, um, putting their fingerprints on, you know what I mean? And part of that will also be through what we're hoping to develop with the website so that there's this pipeline of not only art projects, but also programs and other things that are being supported by the Arts and Culture Commission. So part of that is, you know, expanding exposure to, to all of the things that are being funded through urban art funds for the community.
And as Nikki's saying, making sure the commission is getting credit for that work so that it isn't being seen as an arts commission, it is an arts and culture commission.
You know, in that case, I'd like to make a recommendation. You know, we have produce culturally diverse and inclusive programs within neighborhood settings under neighborhood arts, and we have support diverse programs and events at Arts Entertainment District and Arts Ahpaseo. And in both cases, they're essentially the same thing except where they're happening. So I'd recommend that we actually remove it from neighborhood arts altogether. And under arts and culture events, we expand that to say, uh, support culturally diverse and inclusive programs and events, period.
Support or endorse or what? I mean, how do we support?
Just support.
Support, no financially, not being involved.
We'd have to decide, do you co-sponsor, do you participate, do you promote it, do you endorse, do you endorse it, do you fund it, you know, case by case in that case. But that way it's broad enough where it's not limited by location and, uh, and it gives us that flexibility to make those decisions about when we should or shouldn't get involved.
And I think the only reason Arts Ahk had just been approved and brought to light, so we were just recognizing that, um, that's the only reason it was used. And again, that's almost as example, and if we're doing away with examples, maybe we don't want it there, but it was kind of acknowledging the, the new, uh, the new naming.
So you're suggesting, um, taking the produce culturally diverse and combining it under number four?
Under number four, yeah. So it's not removing it, just where it's categorized.
Because the, the temporary events at the neighborhood level could be cultural, they could be a piece of art sitting somewhere, they could, you know, look like a mural or a happening, right?
So the new bullet will say support culturally diverse and inclusive programs?
Yeah, produce culturally diverse and inclusive programs and events.
And events, okay.
In the community.
Okay.
So that we, it's inclusive, it could be anywhere, depending on each opportunity. Uh, some may be at Arts Ahpaseo, some may be at the library, some may be partnering with an existing community organization, and we could take it one at a time. But then we would have a budget, so then we'd have an allocated budget that we know we could spend every year. We'd have to develop, like staff would have to give direction on developing what the process is for, um, those opportunities to come to us so that we can actually plan ahead and not, you know, for example, next month we have this event, will you give us twenty thousand dollars? It's like, well, you know, we've got to be able to plan ahead, what's coming up in the coming year, um, what do we want to spend, you know, how much do we want to spend it on? Make sure it's multiple groups being included and it's, it is inclusive in itself, so, yeah, we'd have to have a process for that.
Did we make some kind of a budget revision decision? I, I want to look back to, um, the box and the na, temporary arts programs because we talked about there needed to be more money or maybe different money or, uh, detail it out in the plan a different way. So what, what did we, what was the conclusion there? Or maybe there wasn't one, but I kind of lost the thread of where we ended up with that.
I think the fifteen thousand was correct, but only for the neighborhood arts, and then we had to discuss the citywide art.
Oh, all right. Okay, so we're staying with fifteen thousand, which includes the five thousand for A H?
Adams, yeah.
Adams, okay.
Yeah, when it would be broken up, it would be, so you'd have three line items under, or sorry, two, two line items under neighborhood arts. And continue and support the Adam Square Mini Park Gas Station would be, so year one, five thousand, year two, five thousand. And then the launch temporary arts programs in one to two neighborhoods per year. Uh, so you'd have one new neighborhood, so that'd be five thousand the first year. And then if you added a second neighborhood, so you're going to continue doing the first neighborhood and now you've added a second, it'd be ten thousand in the second year. Total fifteen, yeah.
But then we have to now discuss the citywide art and how much we want to allocate there.
Citywide temporary art placement, yeah. And assuming, I think part of it was neighborhoods, needs to be kind of neighborhood appropriate, and so you're not necessarily going to do a large-scale, um, you know, Manhattan-style project, you know, in that, but the citywide may require a, a bigger budget for, you know, just depending on what types of opportunities come to us. But unless, you know, one of the commissioner, we could, you know, if staff could come back with a recommendation for that, for the citywide temporary art placement program, unless there's any specific.
I mean, because we have no specific, um, anything to look at for that item, right? Because we've never had anything like that.
That's great.
So it's a little complicated.
And we've done that in the past too, and where we, we allocated, I want to say, I remember an item that we had allocated a hundred fifty thousand dollars per year and we did not spend much of it, uh, if I recall. It may have been the AHA program where, uh, we'd budgeted a large amount of money, uh, for Art Happens Anywhere, which is kind of a similar, yeah. Um, but we did end up spending it, so, you know, it's still in the coffers, but, but we kind of overshot the.
So something like that, but probably not a hundred fifty thousand?
Yeah, something not a hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, there was a temporary art in public places on work plan fifteen-seventeen. In the second year, a hundred thousand was allocated. Because the first year it said to complete the previous program, which I'm assuming had a budget already set for it, but there was a hundred thousand allocated last time around in the second year.
We didn't spend.
Second two years, actually. Huh? Yeah.
I mean, we're technically just giving a budget, we're not always going to be spending that much, right?
Exactly.
Okay. Should we be referring to the, um, item number one, the second bullet point B, establish temporary art placement program? Would that be Art Happens Anywhere? Is that really what that is or?
So it'd be, we're, one change we'll do, establish a citywide temporary art placement program.
Yeah, so I'll say citywide.
Oh, all right.
I think the conversation was that Art Happens Anywhere is too ambiguous, you know, to the average community member, so.
Right, so we're taking that out. That's great.
So you want me to come back with the recommendation for both the permanent landmark or are you going to, um, allocate an amount for that?
So we wanted more than a hundred thousand, that's what you're asking?
I'm not sure.
Didn't Maria say we were going to cut it in half?
I think it was ten thousand first year, fifty thousand second year.
Okay.
The revised.
Ten and fifty.
Okay.
To be continued.
And we do need to leave some room for flexibility so that, you know, a consultant comes on and can make recommendations and not feel so constrained that, then we end up not accomplishing our goals because we're, we're being too frugal. Yeah. And then the other one I think we need to talk about is the establish a plan for major public, uh, event, event series.
And that would relate to the last bullet point on the table of cultural programming by GLAC or other partners, is that?
I think it'd be the one above that. The annual arts public event, I think, is probably equivalent to the.
Right, right, I'm sorry, yes, right.
Is that the one I constantly talk about?
Yes, yeah. So it'd be, you know, anything from an art walk, art walk to a festival to an art week to, um, holding a public meeting, um, and any other kind of major events we want to consider.
I definitely, again, go back to the same idea that I would like you to have a weeks event. I would like people to come and stay in Glendale and to get to know us much more and to spend in our hotels and restaurants and to get the culture of the city and participate in as many events and also to have like Americana or Galleria and all the other major businesses to partner with us because that is going to bring money to the city as well. Because if we try to thrive with whatever we have within the city, we become very limited. We need to have other people to join us and to get to know all the arts and artists and what this city could offer. So definitely it needs to be a big collaborative event with major businesses in the city and it needs to be more than one day or a few hours than the money we are spending. So like an art expo or anything that would bring all the businesses that are related and everything is related to art, starting from fashion and makeups to landscaping and interior decorations and even, uh, real estate. Everything becomes as part of the art and we could have everybody on board on that and that could be a special week like they are doing in different communities and that I would really emphasize. Otherwise, we become stagnating within the city. We have whatever we have and we see whatever we have and that becomes just a repetition of what there is. We need to bring much more, unless we want to have a major festival or a concert of magnitude that a person is so well-known in the world that everybody wants to come here. That's a different story. But again, it's one night or one evening. It should be something that helps the economy of the city and the artists within the city. Then everybody benefits from that.
Any other feedback on the type of event we want to see?
Well, I'll, I'll go back to repeating again that the, the idea of an art walk that showcases, um, the Arts and Entertainment District and the Arts Ahpaseo would be, um, something we could probably do over days if we just had some, you know, ongoing exhibits or storyboards or tours of, you know, places like the library, uh, the library's cultural aspects, which, you know, I mean, the Central Library is a cultural showpiece that, you know, everybody talks about the West Hollywood Library. I think Glendale's Central Library is like the star library of the LA area and there's so many, you know, the Maker Spaces, the recording studio, Reflect Space, there could be tours, you know, somebody could be available for daily tours over a week, same with the Alex, um, and then we could maybe look at some other places like Mona, get them involved and so that idea of having a more collapsed, you know, I know that the big, the big art arts and open music festival is a goal, but that already exists, so maybe we could do this other thing and plan for it the first year and then execute it the second year.
Commissioner Vidor, can't we combine that in the week of, let's say, if it's an art expo week? Actually, we would organize tours that people not only within the city, but who are not in the city who join us, they'll come and see the wealth that is being created within the city, from historical buildings to Mona and galleries and et cetera. It could be part of the entertainment of the week of the, uh, art expo or art business expo.
I'm not familiar with the art expo.
Oh, okay.
I'm really.
Well, week walking.
Oh, oh, the idea of having a week-long thing.
Yes, and during that we could have all the tours that et cetera. And I know that Ms. Vidor does an exceptional thing with the Brand Library, the tours that she organizes, but she, then we could have much more shown to not only people who live in our city, but also people who come from outside.
Well, we, we could call it whatever we think will draw the biggest regional crowd in, but, you know, I guess maybe that was my definition of an art expo, to just have this week-long thing, but focus on an area that's walkable. And, you know, I guess, you know, there's no, you can drive people off to other places like the Brand Library or up into the Montrose area, but aren't we strategically wanting to focus something on that Arts and Entertainment District and the Paseo and really, you know, get that, like, boot that up, so.
Absolutely. It's a great idea. You know, what I'm saying is that within what my image I have, we could have that also as a part of what we would plan for people who come to our city and they would walk into the areas and they would do all that. But meanwhile, I want to get the support and participation of big businesses who want to make money as well, to join us, to help us with the part that we want to express art and culture in the community. So they need to have some benefit in that as well, so we do it in that sense that it is including businesses, but then we would entertain people with different programs. Even we could have a festival that, let's say Glendale Arts does during that week or different ballets or, or theaters or whatever, they would collaborate their work during that week, that when people come in, they would have something on their agenda that every day and every hour of the day, they are busy besides doing the business part of the deal, they would also participate in whatever this city offers as an art and culture. And also the, the Paseo and et cetera, the little walk is also, would be a part of entertaining our guests in the city. our guests in the city, so that they'll get to know us much better.
Yeah, I think part of the, the idea was to have, you know, something going on, on a regular basis, but also, we have a, a plan to do some marketing and outreach with our business community and the public, and maybe we should focus the first outreach efforts on the Paseo folks in the Arts and Entertainment District, so that we can do what you're saying, include them and get them to be part of the team.
I think we're kind of all on the same page with this, kind of having some sort of an art event. The only problem is, I think we talked about how Tech Week took years to plan out, so this would probably not be on this work plan, but I think we're all on the same page, and we can kind of discuss it later on to plan, start the plans or something like that the next time around.
You can make it small to begin with.
We could.
You know, maybe just throwing something out there with the promise of something bigger at this point might, you know, jump into the pool, but at the shallow end, and then slowly do the crawl to the deep end. Because, you know, I, I just, I keep coming back to the, the Paseo and the Arts and Entertainment District, and how, you know, that's like the heartbeat of our cultural world here, and if we could just do something, and, you know, maybe get going right away on the outreach and get, you know, do some legwork with those businesses that are there, and then just, you know, maybe, maybe we can't be tangible about it, but I think putting it into the plan would be a good idea, so...
So do we want to budget for that, and then we can discuss exactly what to do with that money when the time comes?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with you.
How much could we budget for something like that?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Zoryan, it's, I think, I mean, we've had plenty of opportunities about, to talk about this, and I agree, I would love to build up to an art week where we have a week-long event, but that may take some time, but I agree with you that you gotta start somewhere.
We've got to get going.
And that's the nice thing about the Paseo, it's, it's a small enough area that you can actually have a lot of activity, but it's not, you know, it's not this huge open, you know, space where you could have hundreds of people and not feel packed, so...
With the Paseo, who do you think would be the people who would come and visit? What do you envision by, who are the participants? The people who live around that area, or people who live in Glendale at large, or people from Pasadena, or people from other states?
Well, I think, as step one, I think for now, we just need to determine a budget, but what we'll do is we'll bring back, like you've mentioned, you know, the items, so that it's fully discussed, vetted, and then we bring a consultant, but, but I know that it's not going to cost $250,000, so...
If I can, if I can step in briefly, I've, I've been involved in the planning of the Dia de los Muertos event, and that takes place on Saturday, November 3rd, from 4:00 to 9:00. The budget right now is about $15,000, and that doesn't include a lot of volunteer time, and we've had one donor who is sponsoring the entertainment. So if we want to look at something a little bigger than that, I would probably go about $25,000, and I think that would be reasonable to do a one-day event at the, on the Paseo for that.
So that would be the budget for the current annual arts event? I mean, it wouldn't necessarily be forever like that, but...
No, it could start there, and then as things build, but that would be the, you know, year one, year two would be easy.
I'd be comfortable with 25, as a starting point.
That's one event for the whole year, rather than one per quarter, we're just going to do one for the first year?
That would be the one, one annual event.
Okay.
It says annual.
Annual event, okay.
Right.
Now, it doesn't mean, remember, we're gonna have a separate budget for supporting diverse, you know, cultural, so it's not the only event we'll be involved with.
This is our event.
And then perhaps we can build up to a week-long, $250,000 event involving the businesses, the various arts and entertainment, things around. The theater has a performance, we have tours of the Brand Library, we have tours of, you know, all kinds of things, and lots of people coming to Glendale to spend lots of money in all of our shops, restaurants, and all of that.
And businesses could invest in it, too.
And, and build the reputation of Glendale as an arts destination.
Yeah, I think this planting the seeds now is a good idea.
Thank you.
And, you know, there, there's also, at the, at the Brand, if I could just deviate into another role, now, there is, there is a plan, and it's going to take place this year, to have a high school art show that involves training the artists and teaching them how to do things, and a display, and an exhibition, and everything. And that, the, the idea there is that somehow that will catch fire and turn into, you know, or be part of something bigger. So there are, you know, different seeds being planted around, and this, you know, this will be a good opportunity to, you know, light the match in the center of town. Now, that's a bad, very bad sim, image to...
Please, please don't use that image in this city chambers.
Yeah, right. I don't know why I'm on that fire today.
I was waiting for Mike to cut you off before we start.
Yeah, right. It's too late.
One other, one other thing I wanted to mention, too, is the performing arts series. If we can double-check what our budget's been so far, because I think we didn't plan in, at least the short term, to expand, but we just wanted to continue and support it, so I know it mentions here, one new series in each year, so I don't think that's necessarily what Commissioner was planning. So if we can look back at what the current budget is, if there's any kind of minor enhancements that are needed where the budget may be more, you know, to give that flexibility, but to double-check if it's 50, 50 per year, or if it's less than that.
Chuck has become quite an expert in that area. Being part of the planning all these years that we have done, and we have done a great job in that area, but now we need to expand, especially with Central Library being added on.
You are the experts. Thank you for your direction.
Well, is it true?
Okay, so we're gonna get clarification on the performing?
Yeah, performing arts, and it will be broken up, so it'll be perhaps 25, 25 for each Brand Library Plaza Series and the 222 East.
I think there's a little difference between what is being done at Central Library with that performance and Brand Library. Because Library, Library has already created a tradition and has the set audience that every year is adding and increasing to it, and because people come and sit during the event, they bring their own chairs or use ours, but there's platform and other stuff that is being used for that program. This one is actually, well, it is in the terrace of the thing in front, and people are walking by. So there, there's a little bit of difference between the two performances, which I would like to be acknowledged when we are budgeting for that. Right, Mr. White?
Absolutely. Thank you.
So we have the projects and programs pretty much discussed.
Yes.
What do we think about staffing actions? There's a lot of staff time, obviously.
So just clarification from staff, so in, in terms of, because we embed some of the consultant costs into some of these programs, but on this one line, I have hired a project-based consultant, that's a consult to oversee the entire work plan implementation?
I think so.
Right?
Until someone's hired.
Hopefully it would be a temporary solution.
Yes, hoping that road, yeah, hiring someone, you're right. It's a desperate need. It's, it's very important.
Can you tweak the wording to make that more evident? Temporary solution for running program until a person is hired?
Well, I think if it matches the work plan, it'll say develop RFP to hire, or it will say consultant to oversee maybe project-based.
No, but she wants the word temporary, so that that's not how we would resolve it.
I would change even both, I would, I would change in having them agree with one another, but put that in there, that it is temporary.
Yeah, because it says to oversee this work until administrator is hired.
Temporary, yes.
Okay.
So they won't get a wrong idea that we can survive with that. It should be temporary.
Is the conservator a full-time permanent position, or a consultant, or temporary part-time? What, I don't remember us, yeah. I, that's a new one on the list here.
I pulled that number from the Urban Art Program Plan, so I'm assuming that Barbara was guesstimating how much would need to be spent on that, and it, it, I believe it'd be a consultant, it wouldn't be someone that would be added to staff, no.
Well, wasn't that already in the job description for the consultant to do this research and, and whatever research we already had and build the list?
No, but this is actually the money to pay these people to do this work, in terms of inventorying. So I, I see what you're saying, but, so if you want that just to be lumped in under the consultant, or if you want it spelled out as separate, which is not on staffing actions?
Yeah, I think we're trying to figure out if it's needed at all.
I think we, we did talk about, I agree with Commissioner Zoryan, I, I think we said that, yes, at some point, we would be spending this money to do this, but since, you know, we know what we have at this point, that we'll wait and let the full-time person take that responsibility, so we'll defer it.
Okay, so I'll just cross that off. Okay.
We're comfortable with 50, 50,000 as a budget that we put in front of council right now?
Oh, for the consultant?
Yeah, for the consultant. That's a number we're comfortable with.
Consultant that is temporary person?
Yes.
Yeah, how much time do we think we get the use of a consultant for 50,000?
I assume it was for the year.
For, is that a year? Is that meant to be?
Well, that would be a part-time consultant.
Okay. So it's not even working on a full-time basis, and, so we can't link the permanent position to that by saying, you know, we will, we have to fund the position by X, otherwise we'll, you know, because we are only going to have the funding to support a consultant for X number of months.
Well, and I, I think at the first year, it's going to take time to identify them and hire them. Maybe we would be able to bring people on within that first year, so you might consider allocating some kind of a budget in 2019 to actually pay consultants. Keep in mind Goldstein and Cars, granted, they were a team of people, but that was 125,000 that Commission approved to pay for the Urban Art Program Plan, so 50 might be low, I just, I don't know. And I do think, the last time around, we allocated 50,000 for the Public Art Master Plan, as it was called at the time, so we, I believe we had to go to council and get that approved at the higher amount. So maybe advisable to make it higher initially. And one of the things we'll do in the description is talk about the different types of work that the consultant would do, that would support whatever number it is that you guys think is appropriate.
Can we just specify that that would be a part-time, just so they are aware when they read it?
Another question. For the consultant, let's, whatever we allocate, but meanwhile, in different sections, we have talked about the consul, not the first one, actually, which is a different job, but we have talked about the consultant in different areas. Does that include any money allocated from all the other budgets for that consultant or not? Just it's one time, one item that we are going to have here, like 30, 50,000 or whatever it's decided?
I, for, I personally think that that's for the person that's making sure this is coming to fruition. So whoever it is that we hire, that's going to be the consultant that works on the work plan specifically. Whereas like if there's a consultant for a temporary art program, that would be built into that budget.
Right.
But this, to me, this is the money that's going to be spent to move all of this forward until we have a full-time administrator.
So the suggestion is 50,000 or more?
I don't even know. I, I have a feeling I pulled that out of the Urban Art Program Plan, but I'm not sure.
If I might, the, just as my experience as an administrator, when I looked at the job description that was assembled, it would appear to me, and it's a generalization, that it's a full-time job. So in that respect, you know, if, if it's $50,000, that's going to be for a six-month period, or perhaps we're not going to get everything that we want to have happen, might be better to go to council with a higher recommendation. Perhaps that might elicit a response to that perhaps we need to hire a full-time person, I don't know, but I just have a feeling it's going to be a very busy job, and 50,000 will cover either part of a year, or it will cover a part-time person.
I, I agree with you. I mean, business-wise, that would be very savvy to do so, because it needs to be understood that this is a full-time job. So if we can pay only 50 and hire somebody part-time, that would give the illusion that that could, job could be done by a half-time job and by a half-time person. So that's, and yet, if we would have, let's say, $100,000 for a whole year, this, because this person is not going to get benefits if this person is hired. So maybe council would agree to have a person, if, if not for quite a while, with a good salary, at least as a consultant, rather than as a hired person. I don't know if I was clear in what I said, but the idea is that we need to have a number much higher, and we need to specify that the need is not for a person that can only do a part-time job and fulfill the requirements. Then as a council member, why would I agree into hiring a person when I know that I can pay 50,000 and get a job done? And the job in reality is a full-time job. It's usually, we used to have years ago, a, a full-time and a half also. So, so that's, to, to get everything done and not to burden the staff, people who are working for the library, as there are the jobs that they are doing. So to go higher, absolutely, would be a wiser thing to do, if we, we eventually need to get not a temporary person, but a permanent one. Business-wise, we need to do that. We have no other choice, I think, to go higher.
The studio tour that we did, I think, two years ago, I want to say it was a 50,000 budget, just for the studio tour to be overseen by a consultant.
For one day?
For...
Well, the prep work was involved, too.
15? It was 15.
Yeah, well, even in that case...
We did 15, and it was not a perfect job, I have to say that.
And it was for one day, about?
Yeah, but when we did it with one and a half staff person, we did a phenomenal job with 5,000 spent, because that was not the salary of the person, but the person was overseeing that it was being done.
We wanted to be a job well-done, so we don't look back and say, oh, money not well-spent.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's why we needed to have a good staff person who could oversee a lot of things that is being programmed.
Well, it's a big responsibility, because, you know, these are very publicly visible projects, and you need somebody that's going to oversee it and take it seriously, and feel comfortable that they're, they're being compensated properly to, to do a good job. Last thing we would want is, you know, we budget all this money for these projects, and the person overseeing it is underpaid and is not doing a good job to oversee it, and the quality will, will show through all the way to the implementation of all these, so we probably should consider a higher budget. Are we going to take that to 100,000 for that? Is that where we're headed?
I think at least, I think, what would be, forget about the benefits, what would be the salary of a person that we need to hire to fulfill the job, since you have done different positions?
Well, I mean, the person is going to be paying for their benefits out of their own pockets, so, I mean, I think 100,000, if you wanted to keep it below that, it would still be 90 or 95, and, you know, that's, you know, it's probably, you know, just, that would be, that's purely a guesstimate, but it's also based on years of experience of working with consultants and hiring people, you know.
But, you know, my question is, let's assume that city has decided that we are going to go with a full-time person, not temporary. How much would be the budget? Because like with the district, we knew what, what job entitles, what kind of salary. What would be kind of the kind of salary that we, we do talk about if the city council has to approve one day?
So it, it hasn't been classified by HR, and so, you know...
I did see a draft for that, and it, I think it was like 83 to 88,000.
And then there, there, that includes benefits or not?
And that salary...
That doesn't, that, that include, then there's, on top of that, there's benefits and everything else, so we're looking at 115,000 probably of...
So that, that could give us a better idea of what we should put as a temporary person, which should be closer to what the actual one needs to be.
I like 95, staying right below 100, because that won't scare council law.
Like 95 instead of $10?
95,000, 99,000.
Sounds right.
Five figures instead of six figures.
It doesn't look too big, like 100.
Sorry, Zoe.
Well, talking about 85 also, also works, because if they hire a person, 85,000 would be the salary, and then on top of that, they'll pay about 20,000 for the benefits.
Yeah.
So since the benefits is not there, so maybe not, I mean, this is just a suggestion not to scare them off, maybe 85,000, and then, or 95, including partial if in the future.
Well, it's the person, you know, they have to provide their own benefits, so it's, they're also not, you know, city isn't paying them vacation time or anything, or any, so, you know, but I think staying under 100,000 might be wise.
What would be 85 or 95, or what, what could work?
How about I'll meet you in the middle, we'll put at 90?
90.
I'm comfortable with that.
Hopefully that attracts the right person.
Well, it's not about salary, let me tell you that, it's not. So we need to get somebody of quality, you know, and hope... So we need to get somebody of quality, you know, and hopefully in the future, that person could be hired for the job as well, because, you know, the longevity of the experience of the person with the City and the community makes the job much easier and much better, because every time if we are going to change staff, it is going to be something new each time, and that's not going to be beneficial, so.
Well, you know, just one comment I want to add, too, is, you know, we're developing some of these things by committee is not always the best way to do it, so these are all just our thoughts, but if staff can go back on each of these items from, you know, what we're recommending for the consultant, you know, compensation to what we're budgeting for our temporary art programs, you know, if you could go back and come back with recommendations that staff's fully vetted, and, you know, perhaps there aren't consultants even for 90, and then it needs to be double, or maybe it needs to be half, but if, you know, come back with actual recommendations that are well-thought-out for us to.
Do you want me to allocate anything for the first year? Or do you think it will take the full year?
It's always for the second year, because we're not going to be hiring a consultant until then.
Do you want half that for the first year, being optimistic that we can hire someone?
Half that, so that mid-year, we'd be able to bring that person on.
Please be clear, it's a six-month appointment, so that council isn't seeing it as 50,000, and then suddenly it's jumping.
Yes, absolutely.
That it's, you know, it's a partial year, is all it needs to say. And just, no rush, but as a time check, it's 12:20 PM.
We need to finish.
Okay. So it'll be 45.
Yeah, that would, but yeah, I agree, just to be clear, that's a six-month.
For six months, but please make sure that is there, so it's clear that it's a half-year. Because we want the consultant to do a good job, and besides, when we say consultant, actually, this is the type of a person that in the future we need to hire, has all the qualifications for the job that needs to be done. It's not the consultant that has expertise in one narrow line of whatever is being done. So we need to hire somebody of quality.
Where it says hire full-time administrator, what was the purpose of the some urban art funds with the question mark? I'm trying to understand that, because by then, we would not technically have one.
Legals looking into whether or not the Urban Art Fund can partially or fully fund the staff position. So at one point, when we moved forward with the Urban Art Program Plan, we were going to absorb the cost into library arts and culture budget. Since then, we've been exploring trying to at least partially fund it out of urban art funds, but until we know whether or not that will work out, I don't know that we can budget anything for that position.
Okay. So how would we present that to council, though, is what I'm wondering? Because we're going to be showing that we're hiring a consultant, and we're being optimistic in leaving 45,000 the first year, so we assume that maybe we'll need in the second year, how can we do it so we could say that maybe there'll be a full-time administrator in that second year, possibly?
Right, but I don't know that it will be funded out of this budget.
So how would we write that for them to see? Are we going to write that in detail, that we're still researching what we can be doing? Or are we going to find out before we even?
Well, we were going to do descriptions that will go in terms of explaining all of the budget categories, so we could say that in the description.
Okay.
Well, I suppose in the presentation to the council, I'm not talking as the business part of the year, as far as my professional line of the thing. The fact is that, whatever the consultant that we need for the Arts and Culture Commission, in reality, it is the prestige of the City of Glendale, because we are a component of it, we are just the advisory to what this city needs to glorify itself in the realm of art and culture. So, well, we need to spend money from the art fund, but basically, it could be from the general funds as well, if it is perceived by the council as something that is very important for the community and for the city. After all, it is the name and fame we leave behind of whatever is being done anywhere. So it needs to be understood that this is not for that little commission over there that they need to have a staff person, it needs to be understood as something that makes the City of Glendale as something that people would really cherish, and would think as a diverse community of well-developed art and cultural events, and et cetera. So hopefully, that would help them to understand that, you know, it could be, general funds could also. It is very important that part, and I suppose if we talk to our council members, we need to somehow prep them on the idea as well. It's not the money spent just for little parties here and there. It is not for little exhibits that people would have, coming or not, participating in it. It is what City of Glendale is going to represent, as in the history and in the city, as in California, and maybe all over the United States. So we need to fund it properly, and we need to have the right person who promotes it that way. It is very important to have a staff person who promotes whatever, we have spent so much money for the work plan and for getting it to the place. Otherwise, we can write big, and nothing would be half-done. That half-done job is not going to bring name and fame neither to the city, and always they should remember, commission is part of the city, and advisory helps and brings to their attention of the importance of what community thinks. So we need to work it that way, and I hope our council members also would be kind of put in that idea. So definitely, whatever we put, it should not be a small amount, because truly, if we would get not a great expert for that position as a temporary, we are not going to get anywhere. We need to have a very good expert, even if it's temporary, to entice them to the job, and hopefully in the future, when the council decides to finalize it, then that person could be hired. We need to look for somebody very good, because we have done with the work plan, and we have failed before many times. It was very bad. Once even council got into an outrage because of whatever was presented. But with Barbara prepared, because she was a woman of quality, what was there, the document is a document of quality, that I'm very proud to share and show anybody in the field, that what has been achieved by the City of Glendale by hiring a consultant at that caliber. So for the consultant, also, we call it consulted, but in my mind, a staff person on a temporary basis should be a person of quality 100%. So whatever we allocate should be something that could pay a person of that quality, if we want to succeed. If not, this whole thing is a jamboree of things, and then we can hire somebody, pretend that she's doing the job, and things would not get where it needs to be done.
Great, so I think, moving on to.
We need to tie the time.
Policy recommendations, recommending 2% for public art and all development, the City Council will go at a future date, and adding a student member, which I'm very excited about, to the commission, which will go as a recommendation to council at a future date. And then we have community outreach presentations, which is mostly all of our time and not necessarily a budget item. Developing a website with a calendar, and developing a project-program application process, which could also feed into some of those other items that we were talking about, where the public will be kind of applying for those commission dollars for culturally diverse and inclusive events. Any other questions?
Is June 2019, is there a reason why that was the specific month in time, that we would put that before council?
I think six months is a reasonable timeline.
Okay.
I just kind of feel like if you give yourself the whole year, it's not something that should really take that long.
No, that's what I'm saying. I'd love to see it go even faster, if possible. I don't want to rush or anything, but I'm sure that.
I can change it, but I thought we don't even need a full year, probably, to do both of those things.
These are ordinance changes.
Yeah, so it's a process of just putting together staff reports.
Okay.
On behalf of, well, we'd have to run in three, you guys vote on it, and then move it, but I think six months is more than reasonable.
And what would be the shortest amount of time that it could be done in?
I've never seen anything happen super fast.
I know, I know. I mean, like four months, maybe three months.
To make it through this body and to council, seeing their calendars.
No.
I think that's why it says by June 20, so hopefully faster.
Okay, okay. June isn't the actual target.
It really depends, sometimes they're black, sometimes their calendar is super full for two or three weeks, so it just really depends on how quickly we move it through here, make sure the language is right, and.
In terms of the student member as well, June, I think, would be a good time, if it ends up, you know, and I hope it's a GUSD student that's selected, you know, a senior. The summer, you know, students are out, but it's when students come back, and in late August, is when the process would actually start for, okay, then on their side, who's going to select the student that ends up serving on the commission?
Question, is it supposed to be Glendale Unified School District or the community college?
I think that's a council discussion.
Okay.
So I could amend it to say add by beginning of school year, so take to council to get this changed.
Well, I would leave June, because I think then it would come to our school board or college board.
No, no, I mean, the second line I put was add by December, so I gave us the full year to add the student member, but we could say by the beginning of the school year is when their tenure would start? And that would give us the summer to figure out the process of bringing that person on.
They also start school in August, no?
Yeah, late August. And the 2% for public art, we had the first DSP stakeholders meeting that Commission appointed me to serve on. We had Planning Commissioner there, we had a Design Review Board Commissioner there, and a lot of different community groups, private developers, private architects, and it was a really honest conversation about the design and look of the buildings, and kind of what changes need to be made while the council's reviewing the policy. And this topic, we covered it very briefly, but it was, you know, discussed where increasing it to 2%, but also giving clarity to developers and architects, you know, who do I go to on the city side to help me define what public art's going to look like, and assuming at that point, some point, it would come to commission for actual review, but for us to even define, so that'll all be part of the guidelines, I think, and that will take some time to develop, so I can imagine why it's going to take some time to get this in front of council.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
None.
Great, so with that, we can go, we'll move forward to our next regularly scheduled meeting and bring this back. It will be on action, so if commission's comfortable, we can move forward. If we need more time, we can definitely adjust the schedule and call another special meeting, and continue to work through the work plan until it's ready to go to council. Great, next item, please.
Item three, German.
Great, we are adjourned, thank you.